Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council Meeting to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this evening, could we have a moment of silence? Alderman Zalinski?
I'd like a moment of silence for Sylvester Swedurski. He was a street superintendent for City of Manasha till 1990 and a great uncle of mine. Thank you.
Could we have roll, please?
Alderman Crow Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Collier?
Here.
Alderman Keenan?
Here.
Alderman Zalinski?
Here.
Alderman Spencer?
Here.
Alderman Benner?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
This evening, we have three public hearings, and we'll do them each individually. We'll start out with a little description of what each is about, and then we'll ask the public for any comments that they may have as well. The first is a proposed resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties on the Province Terrace Corridor. Mr. Mantua?
Province Terrace, in a nutshell, is basically going to be a concrete pavement, 37 feet back-to-back, with asphalt trail on the west side of the street and a five-foot concrete sidewalk on the east side of the street. Included in the entire project is the restoration, the restoring of the existing driveways, epoxy painting. I did receive one call regarding the assessments that were mailed out, and basically, the assessment is established by taking all the bid items, the concrete pavement, the restoration, the manhole adjusting, all of those things are calculated, divided by the number of front feet in the project, and that's where the assessment is established. I have some displays set up over by the windows. If anybody does have any questions regarding it, by all means, they can see me after or bring the questions up now, and we can answer them to the best of our ability.
Did you want to explain when we do special assessments and when we do not do special assessments?
Pardon me?
When we do special assessments and when we don't as a policy for new streets versus?
The special assessments, the current policy in the city is it is assessed for new construction, new street construction, new utility construction. Reconstruction in the City of Manasha, current policy, is not assessed back to the abutting property owners. So it's only for the initial new construction of streets or utilities.
And if either you or Ms. Sessman could explain the policy for payment then, too?
Jen, did you want to? I can go through it. I guess if I err, you can correct me. But basically, the City of Manasha has a deferred assessment policy for assessable projects like this. The first five years of the is deferred without interest. At the end of that first five years, it can be paid off in full, or it can be deferred for five more years with a yearly payment made on the outstanding balance, which will include the interest. The deferred assessment policy, I believe, is only applicable for assessments over $500. Jen?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred? I'm sorry, $2,500.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment. Does anyone wish to comment on this? If you could stand up and tell us your name and address as well, please.
Tammy Johnson.
If you could, yeah. Thank you.
Tammy Johnson at 1429 Province Terrace. My address is actually in Hillborough. Are you asking for my business addresses? That street, 1429. Sorry, I'm really nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Is it true that only part of that road is being done, right? Only the portion that's in front of, by Festival Foods, that area? Only a portion of that road is being done? Is that correct?
The part of Province Terrace that's being constructed this year will be from Province Link to Midway Road.
What is Province Link?
Province Link is the side street that's directly south of Festival Foods. As the far left of the displays, that's Province Link.
Up the other end.
It's not the entire road?
Just from Province Link to Midway Road, not the entire Province Terrace, no.
Right. So my question is, why are you only doing a portion of the road and not the entire road?
A lot of it was driven by the festival development to get that portion of the road completed. It was on the capital improvement program for 2017. I believe it was placed on in 2015. Is that correct, Mayor?
I'm not sure exactly when it was placed on, but it was placed on a couple years ago, yes.
Well, when I moved into that building and when I did all of the things that required of me, I was never informed that there would be this assessment coming up. I didn't know that there was a temporary road and then a permanent road, and so that's my own fault. But at this point in time, I feel like that road should be just fixed temporarily where the potholes are and wait until the whole road is being done at the same time. Give us a little more time, make sure the whole road is done at the same time. I've got my notes here. Let me just read this. I mean, our road actually was in really good shape until the festival came in. So like, a lot of us feel this way, that, I mean, we like Festival Foods there, but the road is destroyed, you know, parts of it is destroyed because of all the trucks coming in and out of there. And I feel like just, like, they should actually have to pay for that portion of the road that they destroyed. But now I realize those trucks are going to go in and out of there, and that's why you're wanting to redo the road, because the semis are going to continue to destroy the road. Is that right? I mean, the road wasn't in bad shape. We could have waited another five years. Now it has problems, and we're all responsible for paying for it. We could have waited another five years, three years.
Typically, we put in the final curb and gutter once the road, the area's a certain portion developed.
Finished.
And I'm guessing we're at that portion in that area by now? I believe we, the policy that the city wants to, now, this isn't hard and fast, but they'd like to see 75, 80 percent of the area developed before they put in the final street. The section that you're speaking of, south of Province Link going toward Manor to Walk Road, that we would wait until, that is in the capital improvement program, I believe, for 2020 or 2021 at this point. But we would wait until that was developed a little more, because we don't want to put the street in without the curb openings for the entrances, and we really can't put those in ahead of time. That's kind of forcing the development's hand. Yes, there is a couple empty lots yet on Province Terrace, but there is access coming off of Province Link for the corner lot. The lot on Midway Crossing in Province Terrace could possibly have their entrance come off of Midway Crossing. And the undeveloped area on the east side of the road, at that time, when that's developed, then we would have to put the curb cuts in to where the new development actually is going to utilize the road. So we try and wait until the, most of the development is done. Again, with the festival project, that took up a lot of the vacant areas of Province Terrace, and the road was never meant to be an asphalt street. It was, from the beginning, designated as concrete. We do concrete in the business parks, and there's a reason for it, because of the increased traffic. It's the life of the temporary pavement that's out there now, it's at the end of its usable life.
It can't be repaired at this point and wait?
It would be pretty much an ongoing repair, especially with the increase in traffic. It would be, we'd be repairing this section this year and the next section next year, and it would be an ongoing effort.
So when those trucks, I know you're not going to win at City Hall anyways, but I wanted to, I'm not the only one that feels this way in our neighborhood, so I thought I would come and share how I feel. And I feel like it shouldn't be done just yet, but I understand what you just said as well. So is the sidewalk necessary to put the sidewalk in, and who's responsible for clearing the sidewalk once the sidewalk goes in?
Five-foot concrete sidewalk within the city is the responsibility of the property owner, of the abutting property owner. So it would be the, on the east side of the street, would be the businesses to clear it.
So is it necessary to have a sidewalk on that side?
The design or the ultimate plan originally, and what we're carrying out, was to have the trail and a sidewalk with a 37-foot back-to-back street. At one point, the trail was to be on the east side of the street, but then it was flip-flopped and switched, so the trail was going to be on the west with the sidewalk on the east. That was the original design and the plan from the beginning, when it was developed.
Right. More cost to the salon owner again. You know, it's like the business people get a lot of hits, and then you will repair the road, make everything look pretty, you know, just like what happened in our salon. We had to put a median in the middle to make more green space, cost us parking spaces. Now your business looks nicer, so you're charged more taxes. A lot of frustration on my end, but I said what I had to say, so thanks.
Just to be clear, the sidewalk and the trail are not assessable. They will, they are not included in the assessment.
I know they're not.
That's being borne by the city.
I know. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I think one thing should be noted in Manasha, that other cities leave the streets gravel, and Manasha puts down a two-inch mat to make the, using the street better for your vehicle, and it's not as messy for the neighborhood. So that's something Manasha does that other cities don't do, put in this blacktop ahead of time.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on the Province Terrace project? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close. The second is the proposed rezoning of 216, 221, and 222 Washington Street, from general industrial to general commercial. Director Buck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Community Development Department is requesting approval of a rezone of three properties on 200 block of Washington Street. It's 216, 221, and 222 Washington, from the general industrial district to a general commercial district, for really two purposes. One, to form a larger commercial area aligning with the zoning designation of that block, to align the zoning designation with the comprehensive plan's land use recommendation for that area. Additionally, the zone change would help to minimize any potential future land use conflicts between the industrial users and the commercial users that are starting to go into the area as well. Our comp plan classifies these properties as either mixed-use commercial core or community commercial, so the zoning of the three properties would bring them in line and in compliance with our comprehensive plan. Additionally, the rezoning wouldn't create any use nonconformities that don't already exist, and won't create any lot nonconformities in regard to lot sizes or dimensional regulations. And that is...
So with that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the proposed rezoning on Washington Street? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the third public hearing, a special use permit by the City of Manasha for the use of 100 Fox Street as parkland in the R1 Single Family Residential District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, park use in the R1 Single Family zoning district requires a special use permit. This property, 100 Fox Street, was purchased by the city in summer of last year, 2016, with the intention of using it as a trailhead for the Loop the Lake project. Pat Skalecki with Grave, on the city's behalf, has submitted a special use permit application to basically make that a landing and trailhead for the south side of the northern Loop the Lake trail. It will be improved with the installation of seven parking stalls, including one handicap stall, sitting bench, obviously a multimodal path that leads up to the Loop the Lake Bridge, picnic table, and some lighting. There'll be extensive landscaping, including transitional buffer yards landscaping to the east. Plan Commission did review the request for the special use permit and also reviewed, site plan review, to show the design of the site.
Is there anyone here to speak on the special use permit for 100 Fox Street this evening?
Hi, I'm Kathy Stahl. I live at 225 Railroad Street, and I guess I would just like to comment and encourage the council to approve this recommendation for creating this parkland at 100 Fox Street. By doing so, it means that this property will be closed between 11:00 PM and 4:00 AM, like the other park property in our city. And after speaking with several residents in the neighborhood, they're very much for that, because it eliminates the possibility of people being there all night long, after hours, and, you know, doing things maybe they shouldn't be doing. So I guess I would like to encourage you to approve this this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close and move on to public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes to approve, minutes to receive, actually, in the communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive and put on filed minutes A through I in Communication J.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, thank you. In the memo that you, for the quarterly financial report, with the, under the public works were the, let's see, sanitary sewer rate study, during this study, will this be coming, this will come back to the council, won't it?
Yes.
When is that going to be done?
We're working on a portion of it that involves the City of Nino right now, and that's the part that we're still waiting on.
Okay.
Then the next month or two, I would say.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I stole your agenda with the little note on it.
Oh, no, that's fine. But yeah, thank you for getting this update in here. It's good to see what's going on in each department and everything. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
opposed?
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda has eight items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of February 6th, the Administration Committee recommendation from February 6th for the Gold Cross Ambulance Service, Inc. to participate in the Tax Refund Intercept Program, the Board of Public Works recommendations from February 6th for the change order for Northeast Asphalt for a new street construction. It's an add of $37,935.98, a payment to Northeast Asphalt for new street construction and reconstruction. It is payment number six and final. It's $107,665.71. A change order for J and R Underground Midway Loop Work. It's an add of $5,915. And a change order for J and R Underground Midway Loop Work. It's an add of $5,700. The Plan Commission recommendation for the special use permit for 100 Fox Street, and the Joint Park Board and Plan Commission recommendation from February 14th for the Mill Street Terminus Conceptual Design, including the reuse of the four former First National Bank columns. Is there anyone who would like any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, number three, number eight.
You don't need to second that. Is there any others that anyone would like separated? Seeing no one else, do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
There's a motion, a second. Items that were removed were the Gold Cross, a change order for Northeast Asphalt, and the Mill Street Terminus. Could we have a roll call vote, please? That was the change order.
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the Gold Cross Ambulance Trip Program participation? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number 2, the Gold Cross Ambulance Service, Inc. to participate in Tax Refund Intercept Program.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Could you briefly explain that a little bit again, just for people watching this at home? So this is the part where it's going straight to them instead of coming back through on the taxes?
Attorney Captain, would you like to explain that?
Explain that quick.
There's something called the Tax Refund Intercept Program whereby if there are debts that are due to a number of, you know, it's mostly governmental entities, or since one or two years ago, the statute was amended to allow ambulance services to use the Tax Refund Intercept Program, and if there are debts that are due to a governmental entity or, in this case, to an ambulance service that is providing service within the city, they have the ability to send that notice of debt to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. And in the event that someone's income taxes, if they're going to be receiving a refund, that refund is intercepted, and then it's directed to the appropriate agency or company based on, you know, there's a set, set order of debts that are paid for second, third, fourth, and then in our category, which is debts owed to a municipality, it's first in, first out, so whichever debt is certified first, that debt would be paid. And it just sits there and waits until there are some tax refunds that would be due to a person, and then it gets paid out, depending on what order you're in the line to receive the refund.
Yeah, okay. I just remember, Alderman Collier, you were opposing this administration, for, if I may ask, the reasoning again?
The reasoning is, what can I say? There's a lot of people in Manasha that might need an ambulance. They don't have a lot of money. Now you're telling me that they might get $400 back from taxes, and this company that's got other resources to get the money, you're going to give them the ultimate to say, "I'm going to take this lousy $400 bucks from this poor guy that's putting rent out on this tax maybe," or something else. They got other avenues to collect the money. We don't got to beat them down. That's why I'm going to vote no on it.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 6-2.
Item 3 is a change order for Northeast Asphalt for new street construction and reconstruction. It's an add of $37,935.98. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the change order for Northeast Asphalt for $37,935.98.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? No discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Item 8 is the Mill Street Terminus Conceptual Design. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number 8, the Mill Street Terminus Conceptual Design, including the reuse of the four former First National Bank building columns.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an amendment to that, and the amendment would be that we use the pillars from the old Elijah D. Smith Library in place of the First National Pillars. And I have some designs here.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion?
I have to set up. I don't know where to do this. If I set it up over there, the department heads won't see it, so I think I'll do it here, and Alderman Nichols may have to go around the corner to see it, so I do apologize that we don't have a real good spot that everybody can see it.
Alderman Taylor, we're not talking about Curtis Reed Square. Okay, but we're not, yeah, we're not talking about Curtis Reed Square this evening. Okay.
No, it's not.
James, if you could turn your mic back on, too.
These are the pillars that we're referring to from the old Manasha Elijah D. Smith Library. The library was built in 1899 and donated to the city. The library closed in 1986, 1968, and was demolished between 1992 and 1993. At that time, I asked the demolition company if they could save these pillars from the old library and other elements with the library. It was a beautiful neo-classic structure, and they did save those pillars and other elements from the library. Over the years, I asked Mayor Laux, Director Kyle, that, you know, we should try to do something with that, and probably for the last 15 years, pretty much forgot about it until this project came forward. And there's no doubt this, Ken Saki's design of the Mill Street Terminus completes the walkway from the parking ramp and the new statue we have on the corner, and that all the way, takes you all the way down to the waterfront. And Ken had the four pillars from the library put in here, and with these pillars, this would be the scale of, the other pillars are 22 feet tall, this flag here is 18, or 20 feet tall, and these are 18, and the pillars are 14. So the scale of the project is pretty good, rather than the 22-footers. And then each one of these, we all know that the military has a beautiful waterfront ceremony, and it goes back to the world wars, that they lay a wreath in the river before every Memorial Day parade. And these five pillars could represent the five branches of service, Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force... Air Force, Coast Guard. So, and the pillars are three-quarters, and, and they're not completely round, but they're, they're three-quarters. And the backsides could be the, if you will, the logo of each branch of service, some sort of a brass logo on the back, and then in gold, in gold metal letters, each branch of the service listed on the backside of those. So it would really enhance the Memorial Day ceremony. And the military takes it very serious. Last year, they had a, a three-star admiral that was the speaker at the event. So it's a, it's a very good project, and the other pillars, we can use for another project in the downtown. And I think these pillars help the scale of this project on the city square. And these pillars work really well for the narrow street. And in the Saki diagram, he doesn't have the three flags that are there at this time. And I have him in this model, that the flags are moved up to the forefront, and then the pillars, uh, in a half circle, kind of cradling the flags. And at the site, we have the American flag, the state, and the POW flag. And there's not too many other places where we have the formal place for the POW flag. It's kind of a nice representation in our downtown to honor the military. Yes, we do have the Isle of Valor, but it formalizes it, and it's just another place to honor the people that have worked here. And also, we have an opportunity to use the elements from our community in, in both projects. I mean, what an opportunity that we have, two sets of these pillars that, that we can use in our community. And they're pretty much priceless, I would think. The other pillars, the, the bank pillars are the largest one-piece hand-carved pillars in the state of Wisconsin. They were quarried in Bedford, Indiana, and, and these pillars also were from Bedford, Indiana, too. They were probably carved in 1897, and these were probably carved in 1912 or 13. So we have a wonderful opportunity here for two projects instead of one project in the downtown. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on just the amendment this evening? Alderman Spencer?
Thank you. Obviously, Alderman Taylor has putting, put a lot of time and energy into this, and I thank him for that. I do personally like the tribute to the military and to the veterans and incorporating that into the site. And so I would, I, I don't know that we know enough about the proposal, as we said tonight, to, to approve anything beyond further exploration in terms of determining cost.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for Alderman Taylor. We talked about this a little bit at the, at our column committee, and we weren't sure about the cost of those columns. Did you do any research to find out what the expectation may be on that?
About the cost?
Probably budgeted $60,000, and a 2017 budget, plus $12,000 for engineering. And then there's the opportunity we have with another $60,000 from a donor. And we would have to go back, because of the discovery of these project, of these, of these pillars, after the mayor had talked with our donor, we would probably have to go back and see if it would be okay that we use these pillars on this project, and, then hopefully, the other pillars on, on this, on this other project. So we'd have to take a couple, a step backwards to find out if that money is available. And I really don't see much of a difference in cost between these five pillars or the other four pillars. It's a, you have to have footings, and, you know, these are, these are much larger, and those are much smaller. So I'm sure there's kind of a wash as far as the, the cost of, of the pillars. So that's all I can speak to that. As we were discussing this earlier, like I said, 25 years ago, I asked the statewide racing to save those pillars. And it wasn't till this weekend that I own the pillars, Community Forward Inc. owns the pillars, and we'd be happy to donate the pillars to the city at no cost whatsoever. So it's a, it's, it's a wonderful thing that it doesn't cost us any money for them. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you. So I guess I'm a little bit confused, those, what you were just talking about, those, you own the seven columns that came from the library?
Six.
The six? You own those columns now? And, and one of the things I struggle with is that when this was put out, it was put out to determine the location of the four First National Bank columns. And being the person who's the chairman of those committee meetings, and we went through all those meetings, again, this didn't come up until, like, the last meeting. And it puts us in a bit of a conundrum. And I think that in our, at our last meeting, we talked about the urgency of this, and maybe I'll reflect to our community development director about getting this done because of the timing of trying to get this all put in at this point. And I, I admire your passion for the project, and I don't necessarily disagree with you. I'm struggling with how we got to this point right now and where we're at trying to get this done. So I think I'd be looking to David Buck to help me out with some of that.
Thanks. Yeah, the urgency is really what we need to do for the Mill Street Terminus, is to get the request for proposals for the engineering, for the design. We need to get that out this spring yet, preferably this winter yet, so construction can take place to align with Mill Street being reconstructed. Secondary, the urgency on the use of the pillars is right now, the bank pillars, the four bank pillars are being stored at Public Works Facility, and the longer they're stored outside, not being used, the, the higher the likelihood that they could potentially be damaged.
Alderman Collier?
I, I thank everybody for putting in all the time at the committees prior to this. I've been to a few of them, there's been some pretty solid debate. I like anything that can benefit a veteran or do something for downtown. I got $2, and I said I'd spend them downtown and on new roads. I think this, if it's got a chance to go, and if you delay it or do whatever for two weeks and get the information back, I think there's still time to, to, the engineering done and everything. But I think that would be a wonderful thing for the veterans, and it'd be a wonderful thing to bring people downtown Minasha. And I'm probably going to vote for tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think when you look at the engineering with the large pillars, if you had them there, it's all going to come down to the footings and how these large four pillars would be mounted, and how these smaller five pillars would be mounted. But we all understand, you have to go down four feet, put a foundation in, and then somehow secure the pillars in a safe manner. So that's pretty much the, I think the 101 on the engineering is pretty much the straightforward and the same for each project. We have to leave the current Mill Street as is for the Memorial Day Parade this year, and then after that, the project will start and get into this. So I, I think be in February, we've got plenty of time here, and we can try to engineer this, both, or this set of pillars for the project. And again, the scale of the project, I think, is, is something that really works with this. And sometimes when you go through different programs, like Alderman Benner said, we started with the bank pillars, when the bank building came down just a few years ago, and then the rediscovery of these pillars. So we have, I think, two beautiful projects that, that can only enhance and bring people downtown. And I think the, the opportunity awaits us. This project will pretty much embrace our past and, but express our future. So I think we should really try to accomplish this for the community. And at no other time has our downtown been more vibrant than it is right now. And we can only ride that high wave right now and keep making things better and better for Minasha. And that's all we're up here for. You know, I think this reality of leaving, and what, what a tremendous idea to leave on a high note with, with two monuments that we would have in our downtown for, for public purpose, I think is just a, an historic, extraordinary opportunity.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is going to be directed at you, if you don't mind.
Thanks.
I knew you'd like that. So at this point, our column ad hoc committee was tasked with the job of determining the location of these four columns. The recommendation's been made, it's gone through Plan Commission, it's gone through landmarks, and now it's come to fruition here, we thought it was. And we have an anonymous donor towards the project that included the development itself, and I'm not sure if it really included the addition of these four columns or not. But where does this put the city as far as all the dynamics of donations and where we were with the, the responsibility of the column committee and with the recommendations that we've had to this point? If this portion of the project turned to where it is right now?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Captain, but the column committee has made a recommendation, and they have dissolved at this point. The common council can take their recommendation or leave their recommendation. And if we leave their recommendation, then we would, as a common council, need to determine what we wanted to do, to determine what the location of those columns would be in the future, if, if at all. The don, the donation was tied directly to the columns being used at that location. There was no mention of being used at a different location, so we'd have to start that process over again for the donation. We have a lot of priorities here in the city. I don't know if we can afford two separate locations. We're talking probably over $300,000 to put up two sets of columns. I, I'm not sure where those other funds would come, or if we could fundraise for those. I guess my other big concern is, these are three-quarter columns that Alderman Taylor is recommending. The backside was never meant to be seen. It was meant to be the backside incorporated into the structure of a building. That's the side that will be facing the most visible part of the community, towards the street, towards Main Street. I have some concerns what those would look like as well. I know he has some ideas as to how that would look, but I'm, I'm concerned about that as well. So I guess if this moves forward, we're kind of starting over and looking at the whole process again, the design of it, as well as the funding for it.
Yeah, I had those same thoughts and concerns, even though I understand Alderman Taylor does have a vision for what that would look like, and I think I have an appreciation for that vision. But I don't know, especially financially, how we would get there and what that would all look like. That's pretty much a big unknown right now to go with that. I don't disagree with him that, from an engineering perspective, to mount four really big columns and five smaller ones, you know, probably, probably a wash, but the rest of it, I'm not, I'm not sure about either. And there's a lot of unknowns, and I'm a little uncomfortable with really just where this came in at this portion of the project, and where the funding was coming from, and the spirit and the intent of that funding, was to take those columns from that site and keep them right in that geographic location. And this is where it was chosen and approved to back up with their monies. So, yeah, I struggle with that at this point.
I do have concerns going back to a very generous donor and saying now, "Well, we think that the vision is not the same vision anymore, and are you okay if we do something else when this person made a donation to place them there?" So we could very well lose that donation, I'm not sure. But it would be very difficult for me to go back and ask that person to basically change the whole vision. So I do have concerns with that.
I have an appreciation for that as well, and just the spirit and the intent of the location of these, these columns that went along with the money to do the...
And now we're saying we don't know what's going to happen to those columns?
Oh, exactly.
If we put some different ones there, and are we going to go back and ask again for another donation then to do those?
Yeah, and I know Alderman Taylor has, has a vision for that as well. And it looks like he put it up there by putting it on by Curtis Reed Square, which is a rendering that was done by Joel Weider. But, no, I agree, it is, I'm really not in favor at this stage of the game of, of changing our plan for many reasons. And it's not that I totally disagree with Alderman Taylor with his vision, but I just think it's kind of late in the game at this point. Thank you. And the money isn't. The money to support this, this work was intended for those columns from that site. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you.
I can't see your light, by the way, with all the stuff, so if I don't call on you, you know why.
I know the mayor's struggled with this, and Alderman Benner's struggled with this. And at the time of our column meetings, and just up to recently, the city did not own these columns from the library. Well, here's the letter here, and they're in our possession of Community Forward Inc., and we will donate them to the city. So there's been some changes and discovery along the way with this project. And I know the developers in the past have had renderings of buildings they were going to build downtown Minasha, and then completely changed that. So, you know, there's, there's projects that happen, things that happen, and just responding to, you know, real time at this time, where we are with this. And this, this other rendering over here at the city square, it's not just pillars on the square, it's a performing art stage for the community. The stage is big enough...
We're not going to talk about a stage or other use.
I know, but I just wanted to see what it is in the future, that these pillars aren't just sitting there, as Alderman Benner referred to them, too. So I just wanted to see what that, what that is.
Sure, you have, you have another vision for them in the future, yes.
Okay. And I, again, I think we have a, an opportunity. Why don't we, this can be accomplished, we can start the engineering on it, why don't we hold this for two weeks, talk to the developer, see if they're comfortable with putting the money for this project down here, or maybe they put the money for that project, you know? But we can ask them that we have this discovery at this time, and see if they would be willing to, to work with that, within, within our goal of having a project on Mill Street. So I don't see nothing wrong with that. It can't hurt to ask, especially, we didn't know about this, this, this whole project at the time, when the mayor had met with the, the business person that was donating this to us. So I think we have an opportunity for two short weeks to look into this. And if you'd like, I can make a motion to approve the Terminus project, Mill Street Terminus project, and at this time, with, without the pillars. And if we come back to it, we'll just make the recommendation of what sets of pillars to use for the project.
We have a motion on the floor right now, so we can't have a second one.
And we're still in discussion.
I, I pick an amendment.
Yeah, it's already an amendment.
Amendment to the amendment.
Okay. Alderman Collier has the floor right now.
I know everybody's talking about money, and I'll spill some good karma. We found money for the trails to ride the bikes downtown. We're going to find money for the trails to finish other things for people... We're going to find money for the trails to finish other things where people can come downtown. This has a chance to do something more for downtown, so I don't mind seeing two more weeks spent in to find out if certain people are willing to flex and certain things can come together in two weeks. And I'm willing to vote for that to happen. And as far as the money, I don't like talking money because I got to find it someplace. The $300,000 number, that's not a real number that's out there, because I figure the plan on Mill Street's about a 150, 160. The pillars, if that happens, and the other four pillars are available, I think they will be used someplace, and I think they'll be beautiful. But what I thought I was voting on is if we're going to delay this for two weeks and talk about the other pillars being used through the other people, and that's where I think we should go. Thank you.
The motion that's on the floor right now is to amend the motion to use the Elijah D. Smith Library Columns in lieu of the First National Bank Building Columns. So that's what the amendment is right now, and that's what we should be discussing. Alderman Nichols, I may not be able to see your light real well either, so...
Thank you. And thank you for rereading the motion, because I was going to request that. Alderman Taylor's obviously put a lot of work and thought into these concepts, and I appreciate your passion for the history of our city. When I think back to where this process started almost two years ago, this terminus was presented as part of a concept plan along with the pedestrian walkway. We started at the Broad Street parking lot, which is now a ramp, and proceeded all the way to the end of Mill Street with a concept plan that originated from a community effort. There were folks from the downtown businesses who were brought to the table, along with aldermen from both districts in the downtown, the designer, city staff. It was a collaborative process and one that came about with input, questions, and answers from everybody around that table. That was brought to the council and moved forward. Unfortunately, because of available funds at the time, we weren't able to complete the process in one, the project, in one full swoop. And so we budgeted, in the 2017 budget, to complete the Mill Street terminus with that concept plan in mind. The ad hoc committee was formed at the request of the common council to decide what would be done with the bank pillars. And once again, we invited people from the community with representation from different boards, commissions, and city staff to come to the table. We requested ideas from the community. Those were reviewed. Again, it was a very collaborative process between all involved, and an agreement was reached at the ad hoc level, which then moved through Landmarks, was considered and recommended by the Park Board, considered and recommended by the Plan Commission. So this has been a process. And I'll say it again, a collaborative one between and among different members and stakeholders in the community. And I've seen this happen before, when we've invited people to the table to make, to take part in community decisions, and that decision comes here, and the council decides to take a hard left turn, pull the rug out from underneath those collaborative efforts, and take another direction. And I wonder what those members of the community feel like when they've been invited to be part of the process, and at the end of the day, their thoughts are turned away for something completely different. I haven't talked to anyone who's been involved in those processes, but I do wonder what they feel like. And so while I appreciate the passion behind this, what we're discussing is the bank, the bank columns and the Mill Street terminus. And if another project was to come forward, I feel strongly that it should move through that same process that these bank columns have. And to take another two weeks, or however long, on something that we've been talking about, considering, and collaborating on for almost two years now, is frustrating, and I struggle with that. We've budgeted the funds, we've moved forward in an open, transparent, and collaborative way for almost two years, and we need to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Appreciate Alderman Nichols' comments, and being on that committee, just a couple corrections, if you will. For almost two years, the column committee did nothing until the Saki project came forward with this design. Then we started meeting again, looking at the concepts. And this idea of mine was part of the concepts with the committee. The committee did vote on it. I think this came down to the bank columns and the library columns, came down to kind of the last process of that, and my concept was to put the bank columns out into the square and not have them on this. And again, we struggled that we didn't own them, and we come to the point here where all of a sudden we own something. So I think the process was vetted correctly. There was no one left out. All the ideas were on the table. The committee, the ad hoc committee, did what they were assigned to do, and out of all of that, two sets of columns showed up, which is twice as good for the community and for the betterment of the community. So we didn't, the committee did not shorten up the process for anybody. Everybody was involved. We had some beautiful designs, beautiful designs from the community. So here we have this wonderful opportunity dilemma of two sets of columns. And if anybody else has ideas where they think they'd be better served in the community and come up with them, let's move forward. Let's just make Menasha a better place, that's what it's all about. And is it appropriate to make another motion with amendment, Mayor?
You have a motion on the floor at this point.
Okay. I would remove the columns from my motion and just approve the Mill Street terminus and without the columns for two weeks, and then come back and we may find...
I would say that motion would be out of order, because we can't design, we don't have funding, or we can't start designing without knowing what's going to be there.
And, you know, we may come back in two weeks and have both projects funded, or have no projects funded, and we don't know that at this time. But I think it's an opportunity here to meet with the proper people, show them what the discovery's been and the process has been and why we're here. And we're not pulling a rug out from anybody. We didn't do that. So the process has been, Alderman Benner ran the process in our columns committee, did a great job, and now we're at this exciting dilemma here. So if you'd like, I can remove my motion.
I don't know who had the second.
Yes.
Alderman Zelinski would like to speak.
Thank you. I'll remove my second on that if you decide, if you make a motion to table the whole thing in one.
You can make a contingent upon...
Oh, well, okay, I'll remove, I remove my, I remove my second, but I'm just asking if you... All right, thank you.
Alderman Keahan? I mean Alderman Collier. Alderman Keahan had his on before, but I see yours popped out now, so. So now we're back to discussion of the Mill Street terminus concept design, including the reuse of the former First National Bank Building columns.
I understand where we're at tonight, and I appreciate everything that I've seen done prior to this tonight. And if some of the people that are on those committees take it personal, I feel bad. But the best deal here is to take two weeks and look at what we really have and what's the best proposal or best offer we can get to improve downtown. And I believe those people, if they feel bad or whatever, they'll probably feel like half the people in the United States, if you're Democrat or Republican. So I'm just here to tweak the ship, and I think tweaking it would give them two more weeks and then selling this issue, because we got to have solid answers in two weeks and something to really look forward to if we're going to get this done. And that's where I'm at. I'd rather just vote.
Alderman Zelinski?
Can I make the motion to table this for two weeks?
So motion is second to table, table is non-debatable, correct?
Yeah, but that actually is a motion to postpone. He said two weeks.
Oh, so it's a most, that is debatable then, or not? Okay, so we actually have a motion to postpone until the next council meeting. I'm not sure if that's technically two weeks or not. Whatever, the next, the first meeting in March, because I don't plan on coming for an extra meeting. And that is debatable. Is there any discussion on postponing? Seeing none?
I have.
Oops, sure.
If we're wanting to postpone, I feel we need reasons to postpone. So what would we be requesting more information on as a reason to postpone?
Alderman Zelinski?
Do we need direction with a postpone, or...
You don't need to...
I think we already got the direction, is to discover if we should use these other pillars, and if we're, the monies are still available from the anonymous donor.
I think Alderman Nichols was wondering, basically, who is going to find out if these things are available, what the new proposal would be. Is that kind of what your question is? Alderman Benner is next.
I'm just gonna, that's where I was going. I just wanted to know what the procedure was going to be at this point. It's my understanding you're not going to be here, and so who's going to lead up this negotiation?
I am not sure.
Or if you even had intent of doing so, even if you were here.
And I would be very uncomfortable turning a gift horse away and saying that we don't, that we want to use that person's money for something else now. That'd be very difficult for me to ask that person, and I think we risk having no project or having to have the taxpayers pay for 100% of both projects if we go back and ask for something different. We knew about this in November, and now it's nearly March. Actually, we knew about it in October, it was in the budget. Now it's nearly March, and this person had generously agreed, and six months later, we're changing our minds and going a different direction. That'd be very difficult for me to go ask.
I agree. So I guess before I would vote for this, I'd like to know what's going to happen, what the action's going to be within the next two weeks that's going to bring this to fruition so we have something rock solid to vote on. Might be a little rhetorical.
Alderman?
Mayor, I'd be happy with another Alderman, and if you're not available, Director Buck, and go and show what our dilemma is at this time. And, you know, you look at the development projects that we have up here and look at all the change orders that come all the time, and the changes that we make to these large developments that show up in our city. So I don't think these developers are, they know that changes happen, and this isn't a negative change or anything like that. It's a positive opportunity that the community has, and I don't think we'd lose or offend anybody by going back in a professional manner, explaining to them what projects we have at this time. I think we'd be short-sighted as a community to take our history in either sets of these pillars and not properly embrace the community with it. So, I mean, I'd be happy to, if the mayor doesn't want to go, take another Alderman and go over and show them our dilemma.
So, question to the council. Couldn't the second set of pilasters from the Smith Library be used in another location and continue on the process and the funded process that we have for the Mill Street terminus and continue on that path? We could still use both sets of pilasters slash columns. I think they'd still be both great additions to the community, and we wouldn't risk alienating our donor and/or losing that funding. I think that we could end up in a really great situation there.
And we could end up in a greater situation with having both projects. And for two weeks for us to just say, "Time out, let's go back, show this developer what we have, and then come back to the council," I don't think in any way it upsets our timetable. We can move forward on this project, and if you need to in the next two weeks. If not, we'll be back here. And then we'll have the complete answer for everybody as far as what developer or the donor wants to do with this. So we can put it all to rest then and have a beautiful project for the city.
Is there any further discussion? Becky's next. Alderman Nichols?
I can support a motion to postpone, because I feel we have enough information. The next step is finding information on the cost of the Mill Street terminus. If the council feels strongly that, or if the council would like to request that the flags remain at the, to see if the design can include the flags remaining at the Mill Street terminus, I would support that. I do, however, find, take issue with Alderman approaching developers and potential donors about projects, especially given what could appear to be a conflict of interest with there being an owner of pillars in that conversation.
Excuse me? I got the phone. It's getting into a pissing contest. First, I'm not happy on how it's going. We're here to tweak the ship. We get good ideas, we work with them. If the council says no, it's no. If we say yes, it's yes. And if we say yes, I would hope the mayor would retract the statement and go forward and work for what's best for the city of Menasha. I feel bad that you don't think you can make a sale or make an improvement on something that might help us. If you're thinking negative, I wouldn't want you on my table negotiating. And now I scold you on that part. The other part is, let's just vote. It's getting too personal, and there's money out there to get this project done, the one across the street. We got that in a hat. We're not talking about the pillars going anyplace else tonight. We're talking about them going in a project someplace. I think if it's to improve downtown and we can make a better downtown, let's go on it, let's vote, let's not debate about it no more, because it's just... let's vote, let's not debate about it no more, because it's just getting into be a nasty conversation.
Alderman Spencer?
Thank you. I'm conflicted by this, because I do support a memorial to veterans and to the military at some location downtown, uh, after all the discussion this evening, it's been some very good discussion of, on both sides, I have to come down on the side of supporting the current program, and I would very much be interested in, in at some future date, an alternate program that would, in fact, incorporate a memorial to the, to the veterans and to the services, uh, and be along this, this line, thank you.
Alderman Keahan?
Thank you, I would echo the same sentiments that Alderman Spencer had, in that the thought was that we were looking for a place for those four columns, we've run this through and gotten approval from four different bodies, um, and, and I too would like to see something, recognizing our military, but what we have in front of us, something that people have put a lot of work into, and that was brought to us after four other bodies approved it for approvals tonight, so I cannot support changing the plan at this point.
Alderman Taylor?
We brought you another set of pillars, free, free to the community, after 25 years, and the, the library was a donation, and it would be shameful to discard these pillars. The timetable, it was problematic maybe, trying to get everything done, but nobody was left out, everybody's ideas were on the table, and just of late, the city can own these pillars for free, and for that, I think we deserve two weeks, this body for two weeks should hold off on this, uh, and we should table it for two weeks, we don't have to postpone, and we can table this for two weeks, and come back to it, and hopefully, Manasha's future, future is even brighter, and the, to make sure we can get this money for the projects, and the scale of both projects really, really work, you know, this scale of this project works, the scale of that project works, or another project, but, uh, and with the five branches of service on this project here, is what's unique about this, because since probably World War I, they've been putting a wreath in a river at the end of the street, because this, this, this street was our main bridge up to 1960, the Mill Street Bridge, so they've been laying a wreath for the fallen veterans at this location, and what a way to honor these, these five branches of service with another memorial in our community at the waterfront, where the wreath is laid every Memorial Day.
If I turn my mic on, there's a motion and a second to postpone the item to the March 6th Council Meeting, seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? My mic just didn't work. For whatever reason, Alderman Keahan's vote is not recording, so the clerk is going to clear all of them, and if you could vote again for us, please. Did you get everyone now? Sure.
Motion feels on roll call 4-4.
I would vote against as well.
Okay.
I did just vote against as well.
Okay.
Yes, I voted to continue with the process at this point. So now, on the floor is the motion to approve the Mill Street Terminus Conceptual Design, including the four former First National Bank Building Columns. Is there further discussion, I'm sorry, Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you, now that we got to this point, uh, so when we're determining this, after this is approved, or not approved, when it goes to the design aspect, is that when we're gonna figure out what the utilities under there, because I know that was brought up during the last meeting, that there's utilities under there that need to be accessed, and that need to be changed, if we did expenditures on this, so, either of you?
Correct, uh, we'd go out for the engineering, and utilities have been located currently, but yeah, the, all the engineering for the, for the entire project would be done at that point.
Would that be a very large expenditure, this utility work, that might?
I don't know.
Don't know yet? So I guess my synopsis on this whole thing is, we're still, the taxpayer is gonna be at risk with this thing around $80,000, even with this donor giving his money to us to enhance this area, and I think if we really want to enhance the downtown, we should be doing Main Street in Manasha, because if anybody's taking their car down it, it's a rough ride, I just think we have other, bigger concerns in the city than a down, than a dead-end street, and I have my utmost respect for the military having the ceremony down there, but I don't think we can afford it at this point to do this project, so for those reasons, I will not be voting on this, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have, Alderman Taylor?
I, I like the project, there's no doubt about it, but we're putting the left shoe on the right foot, and the right shoe on the right foot, uh, and I know the council doesn't want to, the mayor doesn't want to move forward with this, but, uh, it would be tragic to leave, when you have a project that fits like this, to leave the right elements out of the project, you're not gonna get the four branches of service with the four columns, uh, for this project, and like it or not, that's what this area's been used for, and, uh, to not embrace our military, and showcase our military is, uh, it's not very good for the city, and, uh, I know we have our Isle of Valor, which is one of the best places in the state of Wisconsin, but here would be an interesting place downtown to further say thank you to our veterans for that, uh, I'm not gonna vote for the project, because it doesn't work.
Seeing no further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
That's okay.
Motion carries on roll call 5-4, with the mayor voting.
Item I is action items, the first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February 9th through the 16th, do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 9th, 2017, through February 16th, 2017, in the amount of $4,787,041.28.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Just a quick question on the check register for, on page one, check number 56772, what was that, I'm just wondering what that's about, something about Appleton Baseball Club, third base? Oh, combine page 10, sorry.
These are wellness funds that are being used from a wellness grant that we received, and I believe it's going to be a picnic of sorts in the summer.
Oh, I thought it had something to do with baseball games or something, okay, thank you.
I think it's like with the Timber Rattlers.
Oh, okay.
On that kind of thing.
Any other questions? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17, do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll move to approve the beverage operator license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period, as presented on the police department's memo dated February 15th, 2017.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item three is the master license agreement between the City of Manasha and Wisconsin Technology Networking for the use of public right-of-way, and the attorney would like to give us a little background on this before we move forward on that?
Thank you, Wisconsin Technology Networking LLC, um, had sent in a request to install three poles within the city's right-of-way, at, um, actually, I think it was four locations initially, um, one of them, however, was at 515 West Schindler Place, and that's actually the city of Appleton, so I had notified them that that wasn't in the city of Manasha, but they indicate that they are an alternative telecommution, telecommunications utility that is regulated by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission, and so, um, as such, when poles are being installed in the city's right-of-way, they are typically processed using a street privilege permit, um, and an excavation permit, both of those are in our ordinances, and really what they have to deal with is, um, requirements regarding insurance, and, um, you know, the, um, how the site is supposed to be managed, and safety for the site, things like that, just, and some technical things, um, their requests are in the, or the first three that they had requested, were in the 1700 block of South Appleton Road, and this is on the, um, yeah, it's, it's near Goodwill, if you know where that location is, so it would be in the city's right-of-way at Goodwill, it's a 120-foot pole. Then they requested in the 300 block of South Appleton Street, um, there is, what, what's along that street?
That's in the area of Alliance Industries, and there are a few homes in that area as well.
And that also was a 120-foot pole, and then they were looking at the third location, this would be a 75-foot pole, this would be Midway Road near the intersection of Highway 47, um, but it would have been on Midway Road, this is a 75-foot pole, generally, um, when it comes to utility poles, since it's regulated by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission, there are some regulations and some terms and conditions that a municipality can impose on a utility for installing in their right-of-way, and the way that the state law is written, it has to be something that is not unreasonable, generally, we say thing, that's a double negative, generally, we say things must be reasonable, however, in this case, it says it must not be unreasonable, and the Public Service Commission decides what is unreasonable, so I just wanted to set the stage for you, um, what they would typically do is, um, with applications, you submit an application, and within 60 days, um, you get a, in the city of Manasha at least, you would get an excavation and a street privilege permit, and then you would install it, um, if the city of Manasha didn't respond to them after 60 days, they just put it up, and so, you know, we're rather limited here in the city of Manasha with regard, or in any community, in the state that is, with regard to things that are in the public right-of-way, um, because the state has decided that that is important, um, that utilities serve a public purpose, and that they should be able to utilize the, um, right-of-way. We did meet with Wisconsin Technology Networking, um, staff, and indicated to them that, well, first of all, I will tell you that I did respond, and we denied the locations at first, and I put a bunch of reasons in there to deny, and then I gave them an invitation, or offered them an invitation to meet, to discuss the locations, with regard to the 1700 block of South Appleton Road, um, that location, um, did not seem problematic, um, as it related to meeting with the, um, we had someone from the utilities, and then, um, staff from Public Works Department, um, the other location, however, on, in the 300 block of South Appleton Street, um, had discussions with them, they went back and indicated that Milwaukee Street, south of Sixth Street, would also work for them, and in that area, I don't know if you want to describe where that is?
That's right across the street from, I don't know if it's which side of the street, but near Manasha Utilities Building, and there are already ATC lines in that area on rather large poles, so these would be similar in height to the poles that are already in that general vicinity.
And that one, again, was a 120-foot, um, the other location, um, which is Midway Road near the intersection of Highway 47, um, discussion was had with the company again, and they had indicated that they could move it to Parkside, which would be on the other side of, um...
Parkside is the road that leads into Pigly Wiggly.
Pigly Wiggly, yes, um, and that's a 75-foot pole, um, we did, um, also meet with them in order to gain a better understanding of what their long-range plans are, um, and then, as I indicated, to seek more appropriate locations, more consistent with the zoned areas, because some of the locations that they initially came to the city to put up their poles were in areas, there were homes nearby, uh, very close, on the same, you know, right nearby, so, um, as it relates to their long-range plans, um, the way that, and, and this is going across the state, by the way, um, they're coming into the state, they're, um, putting in this infrastructure, and they're, um, what they want to do is to provide faster service for residents and, or for users, and so, their plan is to install, they can go, I guess, one of two ways, sort of, they can install a, you know, they have some real high poles, um, they would have this medium pole, and then when they actually come into the neighborhoods, they would be looking to install, um, some equipment onto, this would be utility, utility poles, um, alternatively, well, let me go back to that scenario, if it's the tall 120 feet, and then, uh, 75-foot, and then the smaller, it, when they get to the neighborhoods, if they would be installing equipment on utility poles, those obviously are, um, a lot smaller, but they would, if they have the higher poles of 120 feet, then they would have fewer, um, poles altogether that they would be using, they, because they've had, as you can imagine, some pushback from some communities on the heights of these, they did indicate that they, um, could use some lower poles, um, I am aware of some communities that are looking at 90, rather than the 120, and of course, when they go to lower poles, then the distribution of the signal, that's my language, um, they would need more poles throughout the city, um, for their network, and so, there's kind of a, you know, a, a decision, I guess, to be made there, um, do you want high, higher poles, right, they're looking at the two-high, 120-foot poles, the 75, and then the lower, they would have fewer poles altogether, uh, on their whole project, or they would be, and have agreed to go to 90? or they would be, and have agreed to go to 90-foot poles, but then, of course, they would have more poles throughout the city. I don't know how that would change as it relates to what they've already requested, but I thought it is important to bring this to your attention, because just at the staff level, the discussion was to have fewer rather than more. And because normally this would be taken care of at the staff level, I just thought, you know, all of a sudden you're going to see 120-foot poles, a couple of them that are up in the city, that the council has a preference, that could be something that we would work on then. When I initially started working with them, they had, we had only talked about those three poles, and we had not talked at all about, because that's the only thing they were requesting at this time. But as their project moves forward, as I mentioned, that they will be looking to attach onto city utility poles. That, of course, is regulated by the Utility Commission. The agreement that you see in your packet, I just provided for information only, they did offer to enter into a licensing agreement. We don't have a licensing agreement for this. They did offer to enter into a licensing agreement. The utility does have a licensing agreement for attachment to poles. And so, what I was proposing is to work with the utility so that we can take care of this all at once, both the city and utility side. The agreement then that would be provided to the company, and actually, they're known as Mobile Lite, I don't know if you've heard anything about them in the news or anything, but Mobile Lite is the name of the company. And they, they then would be, you know, we would tweak it using the terms and conditions that the Utility Commission approves with their licensing agreement, and then adapt it somehow to ours, for our right-of-way. We did ask them, in case anyone is wondering about, did we ask them about using existing, you know, maybe the roof, or the water tower, or, we have a tower at, at the garage, we did inquire about that, they are not interested in that, and of course, you can imagine the reason is, that is not regulated by the PSC. We enter into agreements, and we can decide whatever the terms are that we want to, you know, whatever you negotiate is what the terms are. That is why they are not interested in, you know, in that kind of negotiation. They're, they obviously would want to take advantage of using the public right-of-way. Let's see. I guess, so, this information that I have been providing, I'll try to answer questions if you have any questions, but I'm providing it and I, basically for information, to inform the council and the public about this project that's coming into Manasha, to ask the council if it has a preference as to large and fewer poles versus small and more poles. You already heard what the discussion has been thus far with the company, but if there is a preference, certainly we will, you know, work in that direction. And then, I would seek authority to enter into a license agreement with the company, but on the terms and conditions that are acceptable to Manasha Utilities, that's really, the purpose of that is because of the attachment. I understand from the utility that they get about $20 a year per pole for attachments. It's not a lot. That's the, you know, the rate that, yeah, exactly. And so, I have gotten copies of, have been in touch with other communities, our surrounding communities have already been approached. I know that the city of Nina, it's on hold because they have some other things going on right now, so they're not in the, they're not dealing with that issue at this moment. City of DePere, I did get a copy of their agreement. Melanie and I then would certainly work with their agreement, as well as the Manasha Utilities licensing agreement, and try to formulate something. Let's see. There are some other communities around the state, as I had mentioned. DePere, I believe, has the, went with the 90-foot maximum height, and the company did agree to that. And then, I forgot the other one that I had mentioned, Buchanan, I think it is, also had asked, rather than the 120, they wanted to go with the 90-foot maximum. So, that's where they are right now.
Are there any questions for the attorney? Alderman, call your.
A couple. First, thank you, and the 25-year term seems excessive. I mean, why, I mean, if that's a standard, that's kind of crazy, because it sounds like, no matter what, we're going to be bullied in this one. And if they say they want to put five 20-foot, 100-foot poles up, they might be 15, and we have no say where they go, really. But that's down the road. But, is there any way we can shorten that? Because I would think 10's a lot, 12 would be excessive, and that's a lot, and I know it's a long-term project, they're going to do the whole state and everything else. I wish we could put it on, sort of say, hold, and see what other municipalities around here are doing, so that we're not like a guinea pig. But, thanks for the information. It's a tough one, because the state and the utilities are going to pretty much get their way on this one. Will it cost the taxpayer any dollars when the Manasha Utilities get involved in, if they will, how would they assess it to us? You know, when they put the tower up, or if they use our telephone poles, or do anything, there's not going to be no, because eventually, this is going to benefit everybody. There's not going to be no fee charged or nothing back to the poor taxpayers.
I would expect those who have the service, you know, would be paying for it, so if you're utilizing their services, just like if you have a telephone, you know, you're paying for a telephone service, and this is expected to provide faster, faster service. I know one of the other things that they're looking at in the future is, you've heard of the concept of driverless cars, automatic-driving cars.
You could guinea pig that one, too.
Well, you know what, that's one, that's one of the, and it's quicker than you think. I was just at a talk, and 2020, 2021, they will be available to, you know, just for general sale. And it's expected that it, not too far from that, that real heavily populated areas in a city center will only allow driverless cars in a city center eventually, and it's just very fascinating. But, yeah, there are some changes, and actually, they're quicker than, than I anticipated, at least in that regard. But that's one of the things, too, and that, of course, is not a utility now, but will it be considered a utility in the future? I can't answer that. Oh, and the term, you were asking about the term. I already did have a discussion with them about that, and they were willing to change it to, I think it's a 10-year, yes, a 10-year to begin, and then five-year renewables, three-five-year, because this one was, what, 50 years, 25 and 25, and stuff just changes so fast that is unreasonable. Yes.
Alderman Zalutsky.
Thank you. So, these poles are coming, you're regardless, and they're hookups, if we want it or not?
Got it.
And what was the not unreasonable amount for the new poles? Did they ever determine that, or is that based on the size of them?
Are you talking about for license fees?
Yeah, the license.
That, all I know right now is that for license attachments, that the Manasha Utilities receives $20 per pole annually, and that is the going rate from their perspective. These will be different.
Okay. And there's no, we don't get any kind of fees from the new poles at all, being on our public right-of-way?
No. And that is why they are in, when I had mentioned something about going on to, you know, the rooftop or the water tower...
That's when you could get a chance to charge them.
And that's, because we do have agreements with some of the cell phone providers.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And with, with those providers, then they do pay an annual, well, a monthly and an annual fee to us for those, but they don't want to do that, because they want to be regulated by the Public Service Commission, because they're easier on them.
Cheaper.
In being, yeah, it's cheaper in the, in the public right-of-way. So, right now, they are, they do have a license from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission. Whether or not that will be challenged, you know, I don't know. I can't say that, but.
Mr. Mayor. Pam, don't they have some language that stated that in lieu of somebody putting towers up, if you have those alternative locations available to them, that they have to take those in lieu of putting the towers up? Does that work with this?
That is a discussion that I did have with them. It depends, in some areas, that will work, so that when they come down to the smaller areas, they will be installing on other poles. But their, the locations that they are looking at for their coverage plan, they have indicated that there are no poles in that area to which they are able to attach. So, and of course, we're talking about 90, you know, minimum of, or maximum of 90, if that's what you want to go with, or the other one is 120, yeah, there isn't anything that is in those locations.
So, as far as utilization on these poles, cellular is really what its intent is. And one of the things that I always read about with, that's a big competition with communities right now, is availability of high-speed Wi-Fi within a community. Is that something that this has potential for? Because that's really becoming a big marketing strategy for, for communities right now? And to me, that would make this a little bit more attractive, if that's the case.
It is. They want it to be available to, at every, to every household, individual household, and as quickly as possible. As you can imagine, some communities who are probably more tech-savvy, they are very interested, yeah, let's go in, let's get going on this, where do you want to go? And other communities struggle with, you know, how they look, what their height is, and stuff like that. And of course, one of the issues that we cannot address is aesthetics. That's not unreasonable, or that would be unreasonable.
In Wisconsin, it's not that way in other states, I can tell you that.
That's correct.
Yeah. It's amazing, you go to some other states, and you don't even know that they're there.
Correct.
They just blend right into the landscape, and it's kind of neat. Well, like you talked about, some communities where they're not that interested, but if you want to attract technology-driven companies, which we have a lot of high technology in this area, if you want them to continue to get better and to attract more high-technology companies, you need to have something like this. I'm not in a big hurry to see these poles go up, especially the 120-foot pole, has a pretty big base on it, and it goes up pretty high, so, you know, it's probably 10-foot-wide base, pretty close.
I can pass around, they did like a photo, I don't know what they, what they call it, but...
They're like four-foot-wide poles, I believe?
120-foot, four-foot-wide at the base?
Four-foot-wide, I believe.
Wouldn't be an interesting structure.
They just barely fit in the, in the terrace space.
Really? It's going to be pretty beefy at the base, and a lot of foundation.
I don't think they showed the foundation on it, just the pole itself. Because we, we did look at water utility and sewer utility and things like that as well.
That's what I'm thinking, that's going to be a big base, and that's still within your easement, and it's going to definitely get in the way of, of our other utilities.
That's it, right there.
Okay. Is this, what's the urgency on this at this point? Is there, because I see you have it down for an action item, but I'm not sure what type of action you're looking for.
I have it down as an action item, because if the council has a preference as to large and fewer poles versus small and more, then, you know, I would want to know that. And I would also ask for authority to enter into a license agreement upon terms and conditions acceptable to Manasha Utilities, because that really is the entity that would be most affected in the future, when they get around to attaching their, or attachments to the utility poles.
Yeah. This picture here does not reflect a 120-foot pole. It's about a 20 or 25-foot pole.
Yeah, and that, that was what they...
Of course, that's what they're going to show you.
Had provided.
Yeah, yeah.
When you walk up to it, it might look a little different.
Yeah, I'd say 10 times as big as that. All right, thanks.
So, are we looking for a motion tonight, or did we?
That's what I'm...
Okay. So, does the council have a preference on larger poles or more poles? I guess is the question. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it looks like we're going back to the Industrial Revolution with poles, and this looks like it's just the start of it. I certainly hope we could make an agreement with them that they use the water tower and get the same treatment as they're getting with, with the situation, or use the tower out at the city garage and to minimize the poles. A 120-foot pole certainly is a dangerous situation with, you see it right there on Highway 47, right on the, two feet off the highway, if somebody clips that off, you've got a 120-feet pole coming down, you're going to kill somebody else. It doesn't sound like we care about social economics here, because the Milwaukee Street, DePere, Parkside, as the attorney mentioned, you know, we can put them there, and, you know, there's homes there, let's start putting them out in suburbia out there, and this council chamber will be full. But the social economics, you know, put them in the older part of town, the people put up with it probably. So, I'm looking at, once we expand out to District 7, District 8, and how's that going to look out there, 120-foot pole, not my backyard, they're going to say, not my front yard. So, I think there's some opportunity here to say, hey, listen, if you use our water tower, you use our city garage tower for the same situation, or the same cost, or whatever. But more importantly, I look at, you know, the aesthetics, yeah, it's bad, there's no doubt about it. Technology keeps changing, who knows, all this might be done by satellite by the time we're into this program, from 10 years to 20 years, who would know what's coming next out there? But what I really have a problem with, and I talked to the mayor about it, is we have all these companies coming into our community, and they're, they're boring vertically, they're boring horizontally... they're boring horizontally. This last fall, I'm going to work on the corner of Takeo Main. I see a horizontal boring machine sitting there and a couple guys on it. Next day, I go to work, I see it there, and I go, what's going on? You're still here? And they said, well, we got problems, you know? Well, the next day, I come home from work, and I see the 18-foot streetlight pole with the signal lights on it at the northeast corner or northwest corner, listing like that. And I call the police department. They reacted right away, came out. They reacted, got Public Works out there and got that pole taken down before it fell onto some car or pedestrian. So, here they're coming in our community, and I don't know if we ever got reimbursed for it, but here they're coming in our community and sometimes experienced, sometimes not experienced worker. And the number-one problem I have with companies like this is the safety of our community. First and foremost, our employees. So far, I've witnessed two major gas line breaks in our downtown, right here at the corner of Shoot and Takeo, and this fall, right in front of One Menasha Tower on the city square. These two breaks ran for quite a while before somebody came and turned them off. If we're going to have these... Any of these people coming in our community, we change our personal... We change our safety policy in this community, all businesses do. And when we have these companies coming in, we need to look at it different now. If they're going to be doing some horizontal boring, we need to have the gas company there. After they hit the one downtown, there was 14 We Energy trucks down here, and our fire department was going manhole to manhole. We could have had a catastrophic event here in our community from one of these companies coming in and doing their work. We could have blown up the new Menasha one. They were right in front of the windows at the weather vane when this happened, and their auger was all the way across to the square, across from... Right on Curtis Street Square when they hit the gas main. So, you know, I would rather... There should be some more put in here. When these guys are in here boring in our community and drilling like this, we should have We Energies here. They should have the valve identified. They should have a wrench on it and to prevent any catastrophic event. On Takeo Street, that gas main, and it was a major main, 25 minutes. The leak was for 25 minutes. They couldn't find the shut off, and they never called the fire department. I evacuated my house. You could see in the sky this big yellow cloud. You know, it was up hundreds of feet, and this thing's ready to explode in an instant. So, I think there's some real safety issues here that the city needs to step up. And simple things like having the gas valve in the area identified at that time and somebody there, ready to shut it off at any given time. I think some of this work should be done after business hours in the commercial districts downtown when you have all these people in the area. It shouldn't be done during the daytime. They can drill us at night. So, there's different requirements. I look at the...
If you'd like to work with the attorney on these requirements, we could get those put in there.
Yeah. I'm just stating what I think.
Yeah, we get the idea that you think there needs to be more safety measures incorporated into this.
And I've talked about anybody coming in our city and digging in our right-of-ways.
I think we get the idea, yeah.
Oh, I... Okay. And here's... You done?
Yep, I'm done. I just wanted to encourage you to move along.
I have a list of things I want to talk about here with the situation that we need to identify. The insurance... This is the same insurance that I have to have for fireworks for New Year's Eve. It's a million dollars, $2 million. I mean, the amount of damage that this company could have did in October downtown here could have been $100 million. And I don't think that this coverage is enough for what they're doing and the amount of exposure that they're putting the public in. So, I think we need to look at the amount of the insurance. We need to look at the social economics of this. Are they going to put poles out in 7th and 8th districts? Are we going to go out into those areas? And what is their... What is their 10-year plan? And how many poles are they looking to put in the city? And if we have the opportunity with the utility on any of their large steel towers to put this technology on those poles. Again, we've been very lucky with explosions. And I remember one time, I said to the mayor of Lox up here, we had a chlorine gas leak. And he said, that will never happen again in the city. That's a one-time thing. Well, it happened in the swimming pool with 30-some kids in the pool. And if we would have looked at that and assessed our situation, thank God, we got past that one with no fatalities. But things happen, and we need to stay with that. I'm sure the police department, fire department would have a lot of input on this. And we need to up our safety. It's a big document, and I don't see it covered in there. And we need to maybe make those amendments to it. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Am I understanding correctly that these photos that were passed around are renditions and not actual poles that are present yet?
Correct.
I was driving on 441 today, and I think maybe one of these poles is along the highway, near 47 already. I'm not entirely sure, but there's a big giant brown pole with two things...
That's a canvas.
...attached to the top of it that made me think about this. I get a little concerned about these things when I see LLC attached to the end of names because we're not really sure who owns them, who maintains them, who ensures them. And they're wanting to come into our community to do work. They have identified three locations that they'd like to establish poles. Will... How will we be notified of any more poles? And will we be able to continue to negotiate those locations if we move forward?
Do you have any comment to that, Attorney Captain?
The request right now is what I had indicated to you. In the future, if they have other requests, they would be coming in and processing them. Right now, all we require is excavation permit and a street privilege permit. The insurance requirements, by the way, are much, much less than what is in that agreement. And those in the agreement, we already did address that issue. I had indicated to them... I mean, that's what I do. I had indicated to them that our insurance company has different recommendations, and we would be... We would need to abide by them. And so, those are being sent over to them. And then, there's also some language in there that it... Insurance requirements, obviously, would change over the course of 10, 20, 30 years. So, we would certainly want that provision to be in there as well. But what they would do if they wanted additional poles is they would submit an application, and then it would be processed based on either the license agreement or all they would have to do is meet the insurance requirements and stick it up. I don't think we want that.
Yeah. And you indicated before that they were willing to come in and talk about where they wanted to locate these initial poles. And there was some discussion and ultimately changes in where those poles will be built. So, is that a process that would continue or could continue going forward through an agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something that I would like to be included in the agreement? The ability to... That they would confer with staff about the location of those? And how about other protections for the community as far as maintaining those poles and falls or when the poles are abandoned? Because ultimately, they will be. So can we work in some protections that they maintain those poles adequately? And who's responsible if they tip over in a weather event? And then, when they are banned, that they'll get rid of them?
Yes. Those are all provisions that would be included.
Okay. And then, I'm curious what our neighboring communities are doing about this? Because obviously, this company has come into the state. I read some articles online today that they've been around for about a year now, I think. And they've been in different communities all around. And if we're being asked to decide or make a recommendation about 120-foot poles versus 90-foot poles, I'm curious if we can reach out to our neighboring communities and ask them if they've been approached and what they've decided. And maybe we could work this out regionally as to how many poles we want in a region and what that might look like.
I did ask them when we met about if they had approached Harrison and Fox Crossing. And they indicated no, that they had not contacted those two communities. They have contacted... Appleton did submit applications. I am not certain where they are at. I was keeping in touch with the attorney that was... That had received the applications, and I'm not sure exactly where they are at. And as I mentioned before, Nina... I know the city of Nina has asked them if they could just put a hold on the process for a little bit because they have something else that's going on that is taking up a lot of time right now. And then, as I mentioned, I know that DePere, that was another community that I knew was in the process of negotiating. That was over last fall, and they just recently did approve a license agreement, which of course, I have a copy of and have been reading. And then, I think the fellow when I spoke with the representative from the company today, he had indicated that Buchanan, I think it was Buchanan, but it's another community up in that area. And I know Green Bay. So, they have submitted applications throughout this whole area. And I know across the state. Because the group of city attorneys that I keep in contact with, including the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, did ask for a legal opinion with regard to, you know, what is this company? You know, what are they asking for? That kind of stuff. And we have received a couple of legal opinions in that regard, which is what I'm basing all the conversation that I've had with you tonight about.
And I did come across one of those legal recommendations from the league online. And it's my understanding that this master license agreement is the... Really, the only opportunity we have to regulate these companies in any way, shape, or form.
And we are working with them on this... Or at least, that's what I hope to do, is to work with them on this license agreement. I will tell you that we do not have a license agreement with others.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to grant the city staff authority to enter into a licensing agreement. That would be with Wisconsin Technology Networking LLC. That would be acceptable to Menasha Utilities.
So, motion in a second. Did we have preference on pole heights? I don't know if we want that part of the motion necessarily or not, but... Alderman Nichols? Sure. Arnie is up. I'm sorry.
I'm just going to take about an hour, okay? My understanding is, once we make an agreement, we ain't going to have nothing to say. I'm more worried that if it's 120 poles, will it be a lot more? I'm not interested in being the guinea pig. If we could put it off, I'd rather put it off, see what's happening in other communities. This is not nothing of beauty or nothing that I really want to see. If it's coming someday... And I'm an old guy, I'm sorry. If it's coming someday, it'll be here. But if it's six months from now before we vote on this, or 90 days or a year, it ain't going to make that big a difference. The number of poles, like I say, I'm in the 4th district. I hope they don't put two or three in my district. I got schools, I got everything else, but I don't need 120-foot poles. But the number that's going to be in the city, an estimated number, I like to know. And if it's 90, if it's going... 90-foot poles, if it's going to be 15, and if it's 120, would it be seven? So I can make a judgment down the road on what I want. And then, how long before they would add more poles? Because they might short-say and say, we're putting six in. And then, six months later, you got 60. Those are the questions I got. Until I get those answers, I just soon put them off. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor, you're up.
Mr. Spitzer, would you like to go next?
For a moment, thank you. Actually, Arnie kind of asked my question, but I... What I was curious about is the count, 120 versus 90. What would... How would that count compare?
Attorney Captain? I'm sorry.
And that is not something that they had indicated, what the exact number would be. And I suspect that they don't have that answer at this time. What they're working on now is the macro. And then, they will... When they get the macro in place, then they work on the micro.
Is that a piece of information we could have before we made a determination as to the size? That would seem to be a pretty critical bit of information to make a choice between the two heights.
They have been accommodating with regard to time. I think I mentioned to you, when an application comes in, there's 60 days. That's it. 60 days. We're well past... Well, when they submitted the application initially, I made sure that I, you know, sent the letter denying with some reasons which I would hope are good. But I can't tell you that they are good reasons to deny. And I have not had subsequent applications. But if they choose to submit an application, then the clock starts running. And then, we need to have good reasons for denying. Or if they decide that they don't want to work on a license agreement. When I said we don't have license agreements with other companies, there's something called... Trying to think of what the term is. But you need to be consistent with regard to your requirements on everybody that's out there and not pick and choose which companies you're going to have a license agreement with. We don't have license agreements out there right now with other companies who have poles.
Just in closing, I would say that's a reasonable request that we would be making of them to give us a poll count between the two options. I don't know how we can make a determinations as to what height we would choose without that.
And maybe they could give you something and say, saying we are going to have 100 poles versus 10 or something like that. They could say, for every five 90-foot poles, you would have three 120-foot poles or X number of square foot for this size pole, X number for the other size pole.
And that is something that I can ask them. And I will tell you that it is not up to us to decide if it's a 120 or a 90-foot. If they decide they want the 120, that is what it will be. It's just that they are, you know, currently... It's just that they are, you know, currently offering us the ability, because they have made that agreement with some other communities, they're trying to be receptive to the community's desires. But they did not, you know, give me an indication as to what the difference would be. And in fact, that conversation was just today.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just looking at this drawing that they have of the 120-foot poles. And I don't know if anybody's seen these, but there is a new style pole out now. It's a wood laminate pole, and that's what these are. And they have a considerably smaller base than the steel poles, this particular base that they're showing for the 120-foot poles, only 40 inches in diameter. It has a 50-inch plate on the bottom, but I'm not sure how big the pole base is that it still all goes into, but it's considerably different than what we're accustomed to seeing. And I'm going to stop and take a look at one tomorrow on my way to Madison, because there's some on Highway 26 between Oshkosh and, and Wapahon. And the satellite dishes that they're putting up, they're only, it looks like they're only six inches by 12 inches, well, the ports are for it, but they look like pretty small satellite dishes on the top. So it's not like there's a big cluster of, of equipment up there that's really unattractive. And these poles are considerably better looking than a rusty steel pole that's got a huge base on it that's just, it's octagon in shape or something like that, so. But I'm curious about how many they are considering in our area. And just one other thing is that if we don't have an agreement with them, they can impose these on us, and they can impose on us whatever they want. So they can come in with whatever is the most cost-effective, because I can guarantee you, these wood laminate poles are not inexpensive by any stretch, but they're, they're a good alternative, you know, to what it is. And at the end of the day, you know, either we come to an agreement on what we'd like to see, otherwise they're just gonna come in and put in what they want. They'll pay easements to people's personal properties, probably, you know, like a lot of other utilities do, and they'll put 'em in where they want. And it could get very interesting if we don't come to a mutual agreement. So I'm okay with, I agree with waiting two weeks and finding some answers to our questions and seeing what they say. At the end of the day, if we don't agree to something and they decide to come to Minasha, they're gonna come to Minasha. And that's kinda the way that it is. So, thank you.
The attorney, oh, the attorney informed me she's not going to be here at the next council meeting, so we'll have a replacement city attorney. And in the following week, we'll have a replacement city clerk. But she wouldn't be opposed to putting this off to a future meeting. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Captain, I heard you say that you denied this request when it first came in?
Correct.
Okay. And when was that?
Six or eight months ago like that, huh? Alderman Benner, can we have that back by any chance? Can we have the, the drawing back? I stole that out of her. We can make you a copy if you want one, but... I knew I had seen one that had like a four-foot diameter pole on it somewhere.
It looks like the denial letter went out August 5th. Yep, both of them.
And...
August 5th.
What was the purpose of, what did we deny? What did you deny at that time?
Denied their applications for permission to install new utility infrastructure facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Okay. And then we talk about the clock ticking at 60 days. When does that clock start ticking for this body?
No, the, I said that when the application comes in, then 60 days begins to run. So the application came in prior to August 5th, and then I sent them denial within the 60 days. And we have not received additional applications because they have been working with us on locations and they had agreed to a licensing agreement.
Okay. I certainly would like, as Alderman Collier said, I certainly would like to see a projection here of a five-year plan where we may see more poles, 10-year, they want a 25-year contract. I'm thinking in five-year increments, it would be, be in our best interest of the community to see what they're projecting at that point of these, of these poles. And, and you had said that Nina is delaying this or not taking any action on this at this time. I certainly would like us to work with Nina at this time and, you know, no disrespect to Mayor, Mayor Marcus, but Mayor Crawford was in the state legislature for, I don't know, 25 years or whatever. And maybe there's something that they're seeing with this that, that they were not. So certainly, I don't wanna be the first one through the hoop if we don't have to be. And so I think we should, it might be premature for us to, to do something on this. Second of all, I think there should be a safety barrier at the base of these poles. For instance, if a car jumps the curb, like the picture on Highway 47, they, they hit a pillar or a barrier before they snap off that 120-foot pole. So I think it would be in our best interest and the safety of, of our, of our citizens to have a, a vehicle safety barrier in place here. And I, I think that's something, what recommendation we should make with this. If you're coming in our city, you should, you should have to provide some sort of a, a safety barrier of some sort for, for these poles. And the pole Alderman Nichols was talking about on 441, those are the DOT. You see them on, when you watch the weather in that report, or the news reports, they show how traffic's moving. Every intersection on the interstates now have that pole at, at any off-ramp. So 47 has it, Oneida Street has it, Midway Road will have one, Racine Street. So that's the pole that Alderman Nichols was talking about. And they're pretty, pretty tall.
I can address a safety barrier right now. If all poles that are in the city of Minasha's right-of-way are required to have safety barriers, then we could require that? Otherwise, no, we cannot. And we have many, many poles in the city of Minasha. What I'm trying to say is it has to be something that is applied to all, you know, poles that are in the city's right-of-way, not just to these poles.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Just a clarification. Attorney Captain, you said you haven't received any applications since the one that you sent to denial for? So am I understanding correctly that right now we're not on a 60-day timetable?
Correct.
Okay. But we do know that this company is coming and will set up poles?
Attorney Captain?
They submitted the applications we denied and then asked them to meet with us for selection of other alternative locations. The one I had indicated, that's right off the freeway there in front of Goodwill would be acceptable. And then the other two, we had gotten them to change the locations of the poles. So the question at this point is really height, if the city of Minasha wants to limit the height. The applications come into the Director of Public Works. At this time, we don't have a Director of Public Works, but the, the applications are processed through at the department level. That's generally how they're, so I'm not aware of any that have come in since the ones that we have denied, but we, you know, they're expecting that we're working with them because we have talked with them about alternate location for the two. So there's three locations altogether right now.
Okay. Does that make sense? Yes, thank you. Taking into consideration that we currently do not have a application on hand, I would be comfortable postponing action on my motion for two weeks so that we can hopefully gain a better picture of what they are looking to do, how, the number of poles, and what the differences would look like in our neighborhoods. But I still do think it would be important to enter into an agreement, a license agreement at some point, because it is really our only avenue to have a say in what and where the company will build.
So I'm gonna take that as a motion to postpone till March 6th if we have a second. There's a motion a second. Further discussion on postponement. Alderman Taylor?
Something the attorney just said, you know, about putting this barrier in front of each, all of our poles. Well, the situation is much different than our standard poles in the city. And I always, safety is the number one issue up here for our employees and for our citizens. And this pole is a standalone pole. Our other poles, when a car clips it off, you're tied in with three-phase on top, or cable, or the other lower power lines. So usually when you snap one off, that pole will dangle there. This situation, when you snap off this pole...
Remember, these poles are four feet in diameter, not 12 inches like typical ones.
And I've talked in a car moving at a high rate of speed or a truck, and the, we all know, everything is insurance company and everything is exposure. And you're dealing with 120-foot pole compared to a 20-foot pole, there's a big difference in that. And it's, it's just a complete different exposure than what we have currently with our poles. And I don't see why a company like that would wanna try to limit their exposure to catastrophic events by this pole falling on a number of people or other cars. And I just think it's an opportunity for us to say, hey, if you're gonna build in our city, can you put a barrier up? And for you to just say, you know, no, let's not do that, I think we have to ask. And I think it's important that we look at the safety of the situation, because it's something new that's come into our community. And by limiting our exposure to our citizens, our safety, and our employees, it's, I think it's very important.
Okay. Attorney Captain?
And can I ask you what you are referring to when you say a safety barrier? So I know what to ask them. Specifically, what are you talking about? The size and the, what exactly is it supposed to do?
All right. Does it work? You got the turners off, Attorney Captain?
Still, now I have it. There's multiple barriers out there in the world, and whatever, I think our, our insurance company, Sidnik, or other companies would say we should use, simple as putting a steel core in the ground, filling it with concrete, so you, you hit that and you don't go any further into the pole. There's collapsible barriers that if a car would jump the curb, go off, and they'd hit the collapsible barrier before the pole and stop the car. So there's multiple vehicular barriers that we could put up out there in the community to help prevent if this pole, if a car sheared off this pole or a truck.
And if maybe you could get me some pictures of those, and then I can show them and ask them if they would be willing to do that?
Sure. I think our engineering department could help us out with that, too. They, they have all the, the resources on these different barriers.
That's not really what they do, though. So if you, I, I think they, he's got enough work right now, so if you have an idea about what those should look like and you would like me to ask, if you could get me pictures of those?
I'd be happy to come in with engineering and look at the pictures they have, and we can print them for you.
We don't have those kinds of...
You guys have catalogs up here with every safety device known to man.
And we'll, we can get them to you then.
Yeah. Well, I'll come and I'll be happy to work with them. Sure. Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
I think we do have resources, and with technology that I'm not good at, but other people are with computers to get stuff up, we shouldn't be debating that. We should just find a way to get it done. It shouldn't take more than five minutes for the experts that I have at City Hall. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion we have?
One more time, I got mine on.
Okay.
And I'm glad we got two weeks to think about this, you know? We didn't have two weeks with us, but now we got two weeks to think about it. It's always good to take a little more time when you need time. Thank you.
Does, Alderman Taylor, we're, we're just gonna take some pictures that you provide for us then, and we're gonna get, we're gonna give them to the contractor or the company. But, but that's not something that we would ever provide, other than a bollard and, or, or a safety rail would be the two things that we would have, and those would break long before those big poles would break. But we can, if you get us a couple pictures...
You share off on those steel concrete poles?
Before you'd shear off something that's four feet in diameter? Yes.
I'm not an engineering expert on that, but I know that's why these barriers are put up at times.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But if you wanna get us some pictures of what you're thinking, we can definitely give them to the... Sure. Sure. Okay. So right now, we have a motion to postpone, and seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. If the attorney can't, if the attorney needs to be here at the next meeting and we're not ready, we'll put it on the agenda, but we won't, no, we won't do that, but we won't take action unless we have to. Item four is the Lake Park Trail easement. There is, I believe, a drawing, and I'm not on the right drawing. There it is. Do we have a motion? Okay, try again. Alderman Benner?
I wish I did, but what's on here is pretty vague and ambiguous, and, and what's on our document appears to be two different things, so I'm looking to community development to create some steerage on this.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Alderman Benner. Okay, so basically, just give you some background quick, and, and city budgeted funds in this past budget to pave an existing gravel trail that runs parallel to Highway 10-114, and it basically extends from the east side of Lake Park Villas Development all the way down to Lake Park Road, running roughly parallel with Highway 10. So we have the money to pave it, but when we looked at the existing 15-foot easement that exists on the site, it is located just north of where that gravel trail exists. So they don't line up. It's in the wrong spot. So what we need to do basically is realign that and actually make it a little bit bigger to make it a 20-foot easement to now follow the same path as the gravel trail. With that, we are also going to, or we're also requesting approval of a temporary easement that's about 1,700 square feet, it's about 140 feet. It's about 140 feet, um, by, I think, 20, 25 feet, but it's a triangular shape, um, where the trail currently curves to the north and then connects with Lake Park, uh, Road. And basically, we're doing that, all that, um, to get this paved. In 2019, Lake Park Road will be reconstructed, and at that time, uh, the county will come through and connect our paved trail back to their trail that's now gonna be on the west side of, of Lake Park Road. So we're really looking for three items. One is to, uh, get a new easement over the top of where the gravel area is right now, get a temporary easement to allow it, allow the existing gravel to be paved where it currently veers to the north. And the third is the release of that original 15-foot easement that's, that's to the north of where our trail is currently. I mean, in a nutshell, that's what we're, uh, requesting. And if you look on the, on the map that you have in your packet, hopefully it's a color map, the, uh, you can see the gravel trail is the white line there. Um, the red hatch line that's just to the north of it is the existing 15-foot trail easement.
I remember the easement issue with, from the plan commission, but as I read this document, it really wasn't clear exactly what you're looking for, for a motion. And so if I'm understanding this correctly, you're looking for a motion to approve, um, a temporary easement, as stated in, in the document, which is from, um, approximately 1,100 feet, correct?
Correct.
To Lake Park Road along the north side of Highway 10-114, or the enclosed map. Looking for a new 20-foot easement to the new, um, location. That's pretty much, well, you're, it's widening the existing one, or is it a new easement?
It's a new easement.
New easement. New 20-foot easement, and then the release of the original easement.
Correct. Correct. So three, three actions. Acceptance of a new 20-foot easement...
Yep.
...by 1,100 feet. Acceptance of a temporary easement just to the north of this. Easement at Lake Park Road, and then the release of the existing 15-foot wide easement.
So moved.
[laughing].
There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Are you pointing that there is, or...
Yeah, I was just double checking.
Oh, okay. No further discussion. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item five is approval to exercise action on a trail easement along the rear yard of 95 Broad Street. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion to approval to exercise action on a trail easement along the rear yard of 95 Broad Street, which is connecting the Trestle Trail to Broad Street to the Water Street. Trestle Trail from Broad Street to Water Street.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I see that this 15-foot easement ends, uh, on Water Street, and are we gonna...
We, we own...
Do we have an easement, or do we own the property next to that?
Yeah, we own that parcel.
With the picture of the boats are?
That, that's the parcel that we own as a city.
Okay. And, uh, since we're putting this in these people's backyard, uh, what are we gonna do along that stretch in, during this time?
The plan is in the 2020 CIP, I believe, to continue the trail from that point down to Takeo Street. Am I correct, 2020?
Correct. 2020 Water Street is anticipated to be rebuilt.
And is our, uh, are easements gonna expire here in the near, near future?
Yeah. Director Buck?
Yeah, yes. It will expire. This easement was actually a leftover from a vacation, um, of Water Street. So Water Street right-of-way was vacated, and as part of that vacation and quitclaim, there was a 15-foot easement granted to the city along the channel. That was a, in 1997, that was set to be 20 years. So if the city didn't take action on constructing the walkway, um, within that 20-year timeframe, the easement would discontinue. If we do commence construction of the walkway, um, and that would be April of this year, then the easement is retained in perpetuity. So there is a, there is a time crunch on this. The council had met, I think, three times last year, um, and had asked staff to talk to the property owner, Mr. Mo, to see if we could get a larger easement, and with that, certain considerations could be offered, monetary considerations, um, for a larger easement, postponing construction, um, other amenities being added into that trail area. Unfortunately, uh, the property owner was not interested in, uh, providing a larger easement area. So at this time, in order for the city to protect, um, protect our right to get that walkway connection, excuse me, um, we are requesting, uh, approval to exercise, um, action on that trail easement at this time.
Were they informed of this meeting tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I, I think they should have been informed if we're, if we're literally going through their backyard. I know they understand the easement, but, um, is this money, uh, what is the cost of this trail?
I don't have a figure on the trail.
Is it budgeted?
It's part of our sidewalk replacement budget is where that would come from.
Sidewalk replacement?
Technically, a sidewalk.
Okay. Uh, hey, what is the cost?
Do you remember, Tim? It was a few thousand dollars, I think. It was under $5,000, if I remember correctly, for materials.
And there's no restoration work shoreline or anything like that, or feeling?
It would just be a sidewalk at this point.
Sidewalk, okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, just a thought on this. I just pulled a Columbo. Did you notice that?
Sure.
Hear, hear this, sir. I think we should really engage, uh, the river authority, uh, in what's happening down here, 'cause we know we have severe parking problems. This last weekend was incredible down there. So I think what we need to do is, is kinda look at this as a bigger project and maybe engage the state or the river authority in helping us, uh, with, with these projects.
We could. I was down there last weekend as well, and the cars weren't even parked back to Lock Street.
It's probably all timing, uh, different times of day.
Sure. So I mean, there really wasn't a huge parking issue.
But since it sounds like you're gonna put the lift and the locks, uh, uh, maybe we need to tap them for some resources here, too.
Sure. Alderman Collier?
Uh, last year, we talked to this at least three times, and I was really pushing to try to get it done before fall came. This is a very important part. We need that done. If we don't get it done, we lose it, and that would be detrimental to any projects we have on that side or any ideas that would come out in the future. So, uh, let's hopefully have that done before April or by our deadline. Thank you.
Alderman Zelinski?
Yes, thank you. Um, so if we're using our sidewalk repair budget, so this is considered a sidewalk, so the homeowner is responsible for clearing this pathway?
I don't know if we determine that or not.
Nope. Maintenance would be done by the city.
Okay.
That's part of the agreement.
It's part of this agreement, we're maintaining that sidewalk?
The agreement from 1997, correct.
Okay. And that'll just be a regular sidewalk width of...
We'll try to get it as wide as possible. They haven't gone out there and measured, but we're anticipating about six feet.
Okay. I hate to see it come this way. We have to run a sidewalk through someone's backyard and ruin their property value by doing this, and to go to basically nowhere right now, and you say we're gonna develop Wat, Water Street, but I don't see what's coming in Water Street. I think we could, you could have just connected through the street just as easily as doing through someone's backyard, and this stinks for that property owner, and I will not say yes to this.
Alderman Taylor?
You know, I'm ki, I'm kinda confused here. You're saying that this is part of the Water Street, uh, Trail Walk 2020, then why on Broad Street right now are we gonna put five-foot trails on both sides of Broad Street if this is gonna be the new corridor? Why, why, why should we expand Broad Street into the trails, then?
What we're, what's in the budget in the CIP is a riverwalk, more or less, trail along Water Street.
Okay. And that's where you're gonna direct all this traffic?
The Waters, the Broad Street project, which is not on the agenda, but that is DOT mandate to have bicycle accommodations within those areas. That's part of the project. We don't have a choice in that. We have to provide bicycle accommodations.
So then we should probably revisit the Broad Street park lot, take off the trail since this is gonna be the formal trail in the city...
We, we don't have that...
...and save a lot of money.
We don't have that authority. That is part of the DOT project. If we wanna use the DOT funds, we do have to provide bike accommodations on that project. So it's either give back the grant and not put in the bike accommodations or use the grant funding.
I thought it was for, uh, that's another project. I'll talk to you about it. But, uh, for us not to tie in with the, uh, other property there is foolish right now. You know, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. If not, let's ask them if we can, uh, uh, have an extension on this, instead of putting the dollars in and putting it in somebody's backyard.
Well, I've, I've spoken with Mr. Mo several times, um, and he is not interested in postponing or providing a larger easement area. At this point, he's just, hey, he doesn't know what he wants to do with his property, and he doesn't want to make any changes to what's out there right now.
I, I can't imagine, uh, the impact it'll have on his, the value of his property with this, in his backyard.
Well, I think one thing that's important to note is that, that was right-of-way at one time. So there wasn't, it wasn't a backyard at all, uh, 20 years ago. It was right-of-way. So the city actually gave him quite a bit of property in the backyard when vacating the street and only retained the 15-foot easement area. So do keep that in mind, that we're not taking. This is something that we gave and he offered, the previous owners offered back to us. I know we're just exercising on that offer.
And I'm just saying, all I've seen is, I can't imagine the impact on his property.
Alderman Zelinski?
How will this be connecting into Water Street, the sidewalk? Is it just gonna split right into Water Street, or are we gonna be dead-ending it?
We don't have a final design yet that I know of.
We don't. It's anticipated that it would connect just into Water Street right now, and then when Water Street was reconstructed in 2020, that it would connect to a trail system that would run along the, the channel.
Okay. So just...
Temporarily, it would just go into the street.
Okay. And we don't have a renewed lease with boatway on those boats parked there?
We're still working on that. So we should have something soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first ordinance, uh, we are asking that there would be a motion to table at this point. We did do some further research on our charter ordinances, and we found some conflicts with some of the positions that are in the charter ordinances, and we want to look at revising those charter ordinances and this ordinance to make sure that they both match, and we bring it back at that point. Alderman Nichols?
You're looking to table, you said?
We'd like to table it at this point.
Okay. I'll move that we table O-01-17 in ordinance title two, chapter three of the code of ordinances dealing with municipal officers and employees.
Is a motion and a second? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item two is ordinance two. It's the rezoning ordinance for the Washington Street parcels at 221, 222. I thought there were three, and 216. We did have a public hearing tonight, so we could take action on that if you so desire. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve O-2-17 in ordinance amending title 13 by making certain changes to the district, and those changes involve 216 Washington Street, 221 Washington Street... And 222 Washington Street.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Zelinski?
Just because of relevance to this, um, for 221, has anything been discussed recently about, there is, it was in the packet, I don't know how many weeks ago, about, about him trying to sell this parcel to us, and what is our plans with it potentially to bring this about?
Do you have any update on that, Director Buck?
Sure. I've spoken with the property owner several times, and I've also spoken with the county treasurer about back taxes several times. So right now, there's, um, there's discussions on the amount due, um, the requirement for the city to pay that if we were to purchase it, um, and county's potential actions on it in the future. There's also been some discussions. Also, it is a, uh, contaminated site, and it's an open contaminated site with a DNR. So all those pieces are kinda being discussed.
Thanks.
Seeing no further discussion?
No, just, just one question.
Sorry. Alderman Benner?
Thanks. Um, with that 221, and this, you may not be able to answer that, but there's a billboard sign on, on that site, and I think that they have a, pretty much a lifelong agreement to keep that there. Is that pretty accurate, or are you aware of...
Attorney Captain, did you wanna comment on that?
Or not?
And we're probably treading on thin ice here, so...
Yeah, as hard as it's on there.
There is a, it's an easement, and there was a transfer, I believe, of $1,000 or something, a long time ago, and then it was re-recorded after that, um, to keep the easement going. So as far as we know, there aren't any payments or anything, or, but that billboard is on there.
That easement doesn't have a sunset on it or anything? It's just...
Well, you're supposed to record it every so many years, and this one was recorded again.
Is there a time, certain timetable for recording those?
It's like 30 years or something. I'd have to look it up. I don't exactly recall.
Okay.
But it's a long period of time.
This zoning wouldn't do anything to enhance, or, I, I'd like to see a billboard go away, bottom line. And does this, this zoning does not do anything to, does it do anything to make that more viable to have it there or not have it there?
It doesn't. It's a non-conforming billboard in either zone.
Either way, it's, it's non-conforming.
Yep. It's grandfathered.
As long as they maintain it, then it's, it, at this point, because of the easement, it has ability to, to stay there...
Correct.
Forever. So unless it goes...
There's, there's conditions that could happen that could make it come down, but, um, if it's maintained and...
It pretty much has the ability to stay, and this zoning won't affect that either way. It's non-conforming no matter what.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, uh, I know 222 is the old Jensen Clinic. I've turned that property in many times and had, uh, people, um, for violations, code violations. Uh, 216, is that that small house, or is 216 the, the repair shop?
Alderman Benner?
216 is the repair shop.
Okay. What address is the, the, the small house? Are we talking about that in this?
We are, we are not. That was actually specifically left out of this rezoning because of the, uh, large amount of non-conformities that would be put on, placed onto that parcel, um, if we were to rezonate, because it has a mix of some very strange uses and some very heavy industrial uses.
Okay. Also, I'd like to bring it to staff's attention that, uh, they're certainly in violation of keeping that building up. The, the paint on the front door is probably that long where it's peeling and rolling up, so I certainly hope we can clean up that corridor a little bit, and that house included. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item three is resolution three, the final resolution authorizing public improvements and living special assessments. Do we have a motion? Alderman Korkheimer?
I make a motion to approve final resolution, uh, R-03-17, as recommended by Board of Public Works, introduced by me.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? It was Alderman Benner. Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item L is appointments. The first is the resignation of Kara Holman from the Board of Appeals. And just so everyone knows, you cannot serve on both the Board of Appeals and the Plan Commission. So Ms. Holman had to resign from the Board of Appeals because of that. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Kara Holman from the Board of Appeals.
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is the appointment of Jeanne Knapp to the Sustainability Board. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the appointment of Jeanne Knapp to the Sustainability Board.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is the reappointment of James Kozlowski to the Board of Appeals. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the reappointment of James Kozlowski to Board of Appeals for the term of 2117 to 2120.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Item N is public comment, any matter listed on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this point? Seeing no one, we'll move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.